Good afternoon. Welcome to our workshop on mobility fees budget, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So we have two things we'd like to do today. First is just take some time to lay the groundwork for mobility fees, what they are, how they operate, and probably more importantly, why they were adopted the way they were adopted back in 2016, the reasons for it and so forth. That'll just kind of lay a common framework of understanding. And then the second thing is to have our consultant share with you the work they have done so far, and I emphasize "so far" because it's not complete, but we wanted to bring it to you so that you could see it before it was completed and give any direction that you wanted so that it could be incorporated. So those are the two things today. Not looking for any particular action, but with that I'll ask Lucia to come up.
Ms. Garces, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lucia Garces, Deputy County Administrator for Infrastructure and Development. As Mike said, what we'd like to do today is take you through mobility fees. And it is complex, and it is layered, and over the years, many things have happened. So really, we want to talk a little bit about the mobility fee program we have in place now, and then the flashing back a little bit to the impact fee program and what's known as the impact fee buyback program, the offset program. Bonnie will talk about that. So I am just going to open it up and just say that Hillsborough County charges mobility fees. Mobility fees in some places are called capacity fees, in some places are called impact fees. But I think what's important is that the fundamental, the foundation, is really the same whether you're looking at a capacity fee or an impact fee. Our mobility fee program was adopted in 2016, April of 2016, and became effective in January of that year. And so really, the mobility fee is charging for new development, the impact that new development has, in this case, on transportation. We also have impact fees for schools, parks, and fire. But today, we're focusing on the mobility fee and the components of that, and particularly the technical analysis. Today, playing the part of Steve Tyndale will be Neil Goon comp. Steve is unavailable. Neil Goon is with the firm and has been with us on this journey for a number of years, and so she will take you through the technical pieces of that. And then I'll come back, talk a little bit about some of the collections, and then Bonnie will come back to talk about the impact fee offset buyback program.
Good afternoon. Nigirin Kemp with Tyndale Oliver. Mobility fees, one thing the -- thank you. One thing the mobility fee does different than the roadway impact fees, which is a more traditional transportation impact fee, is give the ability to spend on multiple modes. So instead of just being able to spend it on lane additions, new roadways, the county now is able to add transit capacity or build sidewalks, bike lanes, without having to have a roadway component. So that was one of the advantages of a mobility fee. So the basic mobility fee formula looks at cost of providing that infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, that's at the current rate, and multiplies that by demand from each land use, depending on how much they are using that infrastructure. And from that, any future non-impact fee contributions from new development is subtracted so that the new development is not charged twice for the same infrastructure. Cost component looks at county, state roads, the capacity, transit, sidewalks, bike lanes, all of them, just the capital components, like what it costs. And then demand is measured in terms of travel, and then the credit again is any non-impact fee contributions toward capacity addition projects only, not resurfacing, not maintenance. So the basic impact fee formula, or the mobility fee formula works, we just wanted to kind of show you how it works. So in your study, when we did it in 2016, to build a one-lane mile of roadway costs about $5 million. So you know, if you are building two-lane road for one mile, it's about $10 million. That lane mile carries a capacity of 12,400 persons. So then the cost per person mile of capacity is about 400. So every time an additional person is added to the roadway, for them to travel one mile is costing the county about $400. That's just basically what this says. So the average home generates about 21-person miles daily. So when we multiply that 400 by 21, the impact of that home is about $8,400. So that's the total infrastructure cost. From that, we subtract a credit of $2,200 based on how the county is funding transportation infrastructure. So the net fee ends up being about $6,200. So this is just to give you a sense how the formula works. So one of the components we are updating, obviously, is the cost component. And when we -- this chart kind of shows you long-term trends going back to late '90s, and you can see during the economic boom, the costs increased, just like anything else. And then during the downturn, they started decreasing. And now we are seeing costs kind of going up again, getting closer to trend line. So your study was completed in 2016, and you can see since 2016, we've seen some increase. Nothing crazy like that boom period, but it is a steady increase. So the cost update looks at any local projects that are completed. At the time, we had about almost 30 lane miles of construction that we looked at. We look at any recent bids and estimates, and then this -- and then outside of Hillsborough County, we look at the statewide trends, like what other jurisdictions are also experiencing to get a bigger sample size. So right now, we are not done with the cost component update, but we feel like it'd be somewhere around 10% increase probably. Demand side looks at travel. It's measured in terms of person miles of travel, and it has three main components. The trip generation, which is basically number of trips each land use makes throughout the day. Trip length is the distance that they travel from their origin to destination. And then the percent new trip accounts for trips that are already on the way. So for example, if you are traveling from home to office and stop at a gas station, that gas station doesn't get penalized for that trip because that was already on the way and you just stopped it. You didn't generate a trip, that gas station didn't cause a trip, kind of thing. So the data sources for this information, the trip generation primarily comes from the National Institute of Transportation Engineers manual. And that was one of the reasons that triggered this update study. They published a new edition after your study was completed, and it had some pretty significant changes. So they basically throw away any older data, older than 1980s, and then they added a lot of studies. So some of the land uses fluctuated quite a bit in terms of their generation rate, and it's a better, more accurate data. We have done Florida Studies database, so that is actual trip characteristics studies done in Florida. And it's basically going to a site and measuring, you know, where the people are coming from, how long they are traveling, where are they stopping. It has about 40 different land uses. We look at the regional model and also the census data to come up with some of the tiering for residential. So the ITT addition, again, decreased about the generation rate for about 24 land users, decreased at about 30, and then about 10 of them, no changes. And then reorganized some land uses as well. So that will be all reflected in the update study. The credit is really for any ongoing funding of the capacity, and to the extent that a portion of it will be paid by new development. So the county is using a combination of revenue sources, and they were reflected in the first study. And then now we are updating based on the new CIP and anything happened historically. In addition, of course, the transportation sales tax passed. So then we need to see, to the extent that it includes some capacity projects, we need to recognize that a portion of that sales tax will be paid by new development. So they need to get credit for it, so we're not double-charging. As part of the last study, the couple things, other changes the study did was to reduce the assessment districts from 10 districts to two. So the original study that was completed in, I think the last time updated, in 1989, had 10 different schedules, you know, the single-family range, anywhere from 700 to 2,000, depending on the district. And the urban districts were more expensive, rural were less expensive. So this study consolidated those fee districts into two categories, urban versus rural. And rural is higher, recognizing that the travel conditions are better in the rural areas. You know, they don't have as much congestion, they are enjoying a better level of service. So to maintain that, higher fees needed. And then urban area, of course, by its nature, is more built out and more congested, so it has a lower fee. In terms of benefit districts, benefit districts tells us where we can spend the fee. So the first one was just the actual fee amount collected, and the benefit district need to demonstrate that the fee payer is actually getting a benefit from the fee they paid. So when you have a large county, you know, a roadway build in the one corner may not benefit somebody living in the opposite end. So we have to have benefit districts. The previous study had 10 districts. They got consolidated, I mean, we looked at the travel patterns, the urban service area boundaries, any geographic dividers, and we consolidated those into five districts that, you know, still gives us the nexus, but it gives the county more flexibility in terms of their spending.
So with that, I'll -- Commissioners, before I go on to the phase-in schedule, I'd like to talk a little bit about the credit piece because I know a number of you have asked that question. So one way to think about that is a single-family home that is purchased will pay a mobility fee of $6,000. During the life, when someone is living in that home, they will also pay property taxes. They might pay sales taxes as part of the CIT and other revenues of sources. So it is to protect and ensure that who was ever living in that home then paid a mobility fee on the front end to ensure that the contributions that they make while they're living in that home aren't double-counted. So I think if we need clarification later, we can do that. But I think when we translate that concept to someone who lives in a home, it might help clarify that there is a legal requirement not to double-charge somebody for the same improvement and for the revenues that they would be paying through another source. So then moving on a little bit about the phase-in schedule, your mobility fee --
Commissioner White wants to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I really like the example of a single-family home and agree with you. The same holds true for commercial landowners as well.
Correct.
They're obviously paying property taxes. If you have, say, a fast-food establishment, I mean, you can pay upwards to six figures in mobility fees, right?
I believe so, actually. We will have that coming up.
Okay, got it.
But a fast-food restaurant or such, it will depend clearly on the size, but we have some examples coming up of showing what that mobility fee is.
Okay.
So the ordinance was adopted in April of 2016 and then implemented in January of 2017. And the decision was made to phase it in over a five-year period, beginning with a 40% recovery rate. So that means a portion of the cost, 40%, was going to be assessed in the first year, and then 50% in the second year, and we are currently assessing at 70%. So this is an automatic increase that's happening as part of this phase-in. In addition, then, there is this study that's underway that may change the fees themselves So in -- when the fees were adopted in 2016, there was a cost component. This number identifies what the actual 100% cost was at the time that the fee was adopted so that we can see that in the single-family home, it was upwards of $6,000. And then some of the other uses, Commissioner, I don't have the drive-in here, we can get that for you, but depending on what it is, so the drive-in bank, for example, was $21,000 per thousand square feet. So if it was 3,000 square feet, it was 21,000 times three to get to the actual fee. So that was the cost component. And then upon adoption, well, actually, at the final rate, the fee would be at the 90%. So the graph that you see here, the gray bar coming up, shows what it would be at the 90% rate, which is by policy what the board adopted. But then it came in, it rolled in at 40% in 2017, and it continued to increase, and so now we are at the 70%. So this gives you an idea of, for the various uses, what the cost was, and then the various recovery rates. We refer to that percentage as a recovery, what we're recovering of the fee. Upon the -- when we had projected the mobility fee revenues back in 2016, the line that you have before you, the white one shows the projection, and the orange one shows what they're actually coming in. In that sort of plateau of the first five years, what that represents is that during that time period, there were a number of development orders and development agreements whereby there were arrangements with the county for contributions. And so a five-year period was given for those development orders and development agreements to recoup their obligations. And so the phase-in shows that really it's in 2022 that we begin to realize the full cost from those otherwise grandfathered projects.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to ask you a question because this is something I've been interested in since we started this discussion back in 2012, was about the people that have bought these PDs and have been sitting on them for a very, very long time, of which we are not collecting anything, so to speak, except the taxes on the property. So when they develop, they would be at the current-year rate?
If they are not part of a development order or agreement that was grandfathered in, they would be paying the current rate. That's correct.
How many are, like, I know we haven't reviewed this in a while, how many PDs we actually have on the books and what the age of them are, because I'm still of the opinion that we shouldn't let them go more than 10 years. You know, that's just kind of, I think that's the right thing to do, especially with our growing and expanding community. These people move into neighborhoods, they think it's going to be that way forever, and then it changes overnight. But I guess I just wanted to ask if there's, maybe you could bring back to us a review, tell us how many are in, how old they are, and --
We can do that. I think we did that some time ago, so I think we can update that study.
We do, we need to update it.
And now, of course, a number of them have been built out so we can bring back what they are and take a look at that. We had a significant number of PDs in this community.
I know, I know.
Over 2,000 was my recall.
So is there still, like, among you and the staff, is there, because I notice we haven't done anything to move towards changing the policy of, you know, having them only 10, after 10 years, they have to go back through a process again. Is there still any movement to go in that direction?
We can certainly look at that. There are jurisdictions that do --
I know, Pasco is one of them.
Put a cap on how long a PD or other entitlements are valid, and then they do have to go through the process. So we can bring that back to you if that's what you would like to do.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Oldman, you recognize?
Thank you. Actually, as it relates to the fact that we do have PDs that have been out there for decades, if I'm not mistaken, but we also have, if I understand it correctly, so there was an agreement to delay the increase that was voted on for approximately five years back in 16 for some of the developments that are currently underway, correct?
And those are developments that had very specific contractual obligations with the county. They were development orders through the old DRI process or development agreements.
Okay. So, and that was, that's phased in until 2021, correct?
Correct, at the end.
Okay. So our mobility fee fees, the formula was largely developed as a consequence of our cost component? Is that related at all?
A couple of things.
That's a piece of it, is the cost component?
Cost of construction is definitely one piece of it.
Okay. Since 2016, at that point, it appears as though, based on slide seven, that our cost at that time was at the 200% level. And then by -- yeah, there it is. And then by 2018, which is within the timeframe that we've agreed to keep mobility fees basically level, instead of at the increase that we voted on, apparently, it's now at, well, in 18, it was about 225, it appears. So we've seen a 25% or an increase of 25% to the cost during that time period, and yet we haven't raised fees during that time period. And in the case of those that are being grandfathered in or we just haven't done anything about, we may have not been able to calculate for there. So while it looks like there's a massive increase in 2021, if you really average it out, what we've actually not been charging, we've, that should not be a big issue, although the sticker shock is liable to be significant. Is that, am I reading that right?
So, and I may ask Neil Goon to speak to that a little bit, because the cost chart that you see is what it's costing us to build a road. So the big hump was when we were really booming, and construction was very expensive, and then it dropped down. So that is figured into the cost component of the formula.
Right, yeah. I was using the actual number, which is still below the average, the number. The average number is closer to 250%, but the actual, according to your illustration here, which is great, thank you very much, it was helpful, shows that approximately 25% more than what we, when we started this process in 16. Is that --
But I don't, so I think what the consultant is now going to do, and Neil Goon will verify that, on this slide where it says the one-lane mile costs $5 million, what they're actually going to do is verify what that number is. So if it's $10 million for two lanes, they're going to see if that's $11 million, if it's $9 million. That will be the more effect, that will be the more appropriate number to include in this. The chart gives you a sense of what's been happening to construction costs over a very long period of time, but it's the absolute number that will be factored into the formula itself. Does that help?
Okay, all right.
Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Just like to also agree with Commissioner Merman as to the PD or looking at how you develop. I have many questions about this. One is the technical analysis urban fee calculation here, is this what we are currently using? Is this what we are going to use? I'm just doing this for memory. I thought we had an $8 million a mile road that was used in the original calculations in 2015.
I don't recall if the 2015 calculation --
Or 20, there's one that was passed in 2016. So this $10 million, I guess, road per mile, that's what you're saying is now going to be used?
It is currently being used. It is what is being used in the formula today, is the $5 million a mile, two lanes, $10 million. It's what's factored into the formula that Neil Goon reviewed, this one right here.
That was passed in 2016, or that you're looking at for a future projection?
So they're going, that was passed. The $5 million per lane, or $10 million for a two-lane road, is what is currently in there. It is what was passed.
So what is that based on? Because, I mean, I think about things like the Lithia Pine Crest widening, which is because we're getting new, we need new capacity because of growing impacts. And that's going to be $33 million a mile now. And so, like, I keep looking for the roads that cost just as much. I'm like, where is this coming from? How does this work? I don't get it. Where, we get such a low cost for our roads.
So I think I'd ask Neil Goon to go back. Her, I guess it was forward. Their analysis includes looking at our improvements that we've done in the past, some that we know we're going to be doing, and projections and procurements and bids, as well as statewide. So they're using a broad range of costs from a number of sample communities, so --
Why do we use statewide? Because, you know, our costs here, I would think, are different because of our property values and things like that. So like, why wouldn't we use a Hillsborough-based formula based on our costs here?
I will ask Neil Goon to respond to that question. I mean, we clearly do. I think that is the first factor. The second factor is we layer on top of it, and I'll ask her to speak to that.
So when we estimate the costs, we definitely first look at all the local projects. And actually, state legislation says most recent and localized data, that's what's required. So we look at any projects, and at the time, we look, going back to almost 2,000, everything the county built. And that gave us one number. We then compare that to, just more like a quality control measure, to everybody else. We look at District 7 as a separate category as well, just to see, you know, because some districts are more expensive than the others. So to make sure that we are reflecting the local cost. So the goal is as much as possible to reflect the local cost. And that cost includes construction right-of-way, design, all components of the, and the $5 million is per one-lane mile. So a lot of, obviously, projects have a lot more, so, you know, however long they are, they're going to be that much more.
Do you know off the, do you know what the 2016 calculation was?
2016 calculation gave us about $5 million per lane mile.
Okay, that was the 2016.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Okay, so, but we're not required? I mean, I know you say you use it as a measure, but District 7, even when you say District 7, that's like massive and takes in a lot of rural area and everything, which would be, again, I think, a lower calculation about your cost of roads. So to me, because of, especially where we're looking at and everything, it just seems to me it would make more sense to base this basically on Hillsborough County.
Right.
And to base it percentage-wise, or, you know, on what's in your urban service area, and then the few roads outside your urban service area that you might do, I don't know. But to look at that kind of calculation, this just looks remarkably, you know, I just keep wanting to build roads at this cost.
Yeah, no, we definitely rely more on the local data. And then when we do look at how much capacity, because ultimately, it's costing this much, it's carrying this much, so the cost to carry this many cars, then we look at the combination of the roadways built in the urban versus rural to weigh that cost. But yeah, no, it's much more heavily, and we had, I mean, we had quite a bit of projects in Hillsborough County to feel comfortable relying more heavily on local. When you have one or two cases, like when there's only one or two projects, it's harder to feel comfortable. But yeah, it definitely dominated, and it will be too. When we bring up the cost update, you're going to see all the details, like as far as, these are your local projects, this is the state, and this is what we decided. So I think you'll see that -- So I think you'll see that it's definitely the local representation is there.
So, so my other question was too about our very strong sense of this board moving forward in the future that we've put into place in a lot of ways, to look at a much more robust package of complete streets with sidewalks and bicycle pedestrian accommodations, which we have not had in the past. So I would imagine, I would think, that that would also change this calculation based on, you know, what we are intending to do and what, and what we've expressed that we want to make sure that we accommodate in the future.
Right. And when you switch from roadway-based to mobility, you actually achieve that flexibility. Now you can build only the sidewalks if they weren't there before, or just add bike lanes. Before, it had to be part of a lane addition project. So that gave you the deflexibility. Cost component looks at them. Honestly, compared to actual roadway, those are a lot smaller components, and most roadways include some component of it. But we definitely look at, look at those as well to make sure that we are including.
The other was, and one of the reasons I ask is, when I pulled out our fee schedule, I just did our, even our 90% fee schedule going forward and comparing it in the rural and urban service areas to simply Pasco County, and I pulled Sarasota just really quickly last night. And we're still, I would just say, far below what they're calculated out for their impact fees, even if we look ahead at our 90%. Because one of the things I think we need to do is probably, and I'm just, I don't know, and this is maybe something Miss Garcia's could, but, you know, I, I would think we need to speed up this schedule for implementation, because we have been woefully behind forever in terms of, and by, you know, doing our, stepping up our schedule in this way, it just seems to me that, I mean, even at the 90% rate, we're still running far behind what Pasco and Sarasota calculated as their impacts, you know, a decade ago. So, or, well, at least five years ago. So I'm just wondering about that in terms of a step up now and how that affects that you're calculating out new things, and I guess, and I'll ask another question after your...
Let me say this, they still have more presentation to go?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had finished. Sorry.
No, we hadn't finished.
Okay.
So can you stick a pin on that right there?
Yep, sure can.
And come back after this presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the mobility fee program was adopted in 2016 and implemented in 2017. But once upon a time, we had a different program in place, and this goes back to what some of you may know, where we actually had a concurrency program, a robust concurrency program that was authorized in the early 90s, and we also collected impact fees. Again, impact fees calculated much the same way, but really limited to road expansion. And so the concurrency program and the impact fee program together were how we were constructing a lot of roads. When someone was evaluated for concurrency, if there was a need for that project to improve capacity or add capacity, there was a concurrency improvement made, and some of you may know this as a proportionate share improvement. And so there are a number of projects that were constructed in the county with using proportionate share. And as part of that, the developer of the project, who was constructing the project, the, the improvement would get an offset. An offset means that their impact fee obligation would be, their improvement would be then used to offset their impact fee obligation. So it was a little bit like, it was measured in dollar credits. So if someone built a $6 million road widening or an improvement, major road widening, these are not residential streets, these are major capacity projects that the county would have otherwise built to improve its network. That developer could then use the impact fee offsets to pay off their obligation. And so they could use the offsets to pay their obligation. In addition, they could sell or trade their offsets on the private market. So if someone had more than they needed, they could sell them to their neighbor, they could sell them as development occurred to builders that were buying lots in their projects, and currently, they're able to convert those impact fee offsets to pay mobility fee obligations. And I think what's important here and what is the foreshadowing when, for Bonnie's presentation is that the value of concurrency projects, so concurrency improvements that were made, exceeded the cost of what the impact fee obligation was. The impact fees were low at the time, and so there was a disproportionate share of disproportionate amount of credits to the actual impact fee obligations. It is not to say that we did not obtain a lot of improvements through the, through the concurrency program. If we look, for example, Linebaugh Avenue was constructed under this program for $7.5 million. Citrus Park in the northwest for $6.6 million. US 301 was a major agreement with a lot of developers that contributed either through cash or improvements, over $40 million. And then as well, Fishhawk Boulevard, just as an example, was $17 million. So over the course of the life here, over, well over $200 million worth of improvements and contributions have been made to really identify these projects that have been, that are on here right now. So it's major roadway improvements as well as a lot of intersection improvements. But then, the concurrency program as we knew it in 2011 was severely restricted in what we could do. And so really what happened is that any backlog that we had, so any roadway that was identified as deficient or not being able to provide the capacity could no longer be calculated or used in a concurrency assessment. So what that meant for us is that with the new concurrency program after 2011, we were generating about $2.3 million in improvements through the concurrency program, about 2.4 in impact fees, the old impact fees. And at that time, when we were converting from impact fees and concurrency to a mobility fee program, we had about $94 million of impact fee offsets that were currently on the books. There were about 900 holders of impact fee offsets from 1985 on, and a number of them were old and obsolete, but they were, they were part of the reason why we went to this program that Bonnie's going to talk about, which is really to figure out how to reduce the, the impact fee offsets that we had on the books and start collecting the higher mobility fee that was already adopted by the board. So with that, I will turn it over to Bonnie to talk about the impact fee offset buyback program.
Good afternoon, Ms. Wise.
Good afternoon, Bonnie Wise. So here we were, we're putting ourselves back into that point in time where we had $94 million of offsets outstanding. We had implemented the new higher mobility fee, and we wanted to start collecting those monies as quickly as possible. So what we wanted to do was reduce the amount of offsets that were outstanding in the market. Because remember, as Lucia mentioned, if they use them to pay the new mobility fee or traded them in the market, they're using them dollar for dollar. So we wanted to see if we could buy them back at some reduced rate and save the taxpayers some, some dollars. So that was some of the premise of why we created this buyback program. We wanted to, as Lucia mentioned, recognize those contributions that the developer made of those roadworks, get those monies in faster. And then with the offsets that we purchased, how could then the county use them and deploy them in its own manner for smarter growth? So we created this impact fee buyback program, working with our financial advisor. We modeled it after buying back securities in the bond market. So without getting into too much detail into bond nuances, we structured this program. It was a multi-year program where we were going to have a series of auctions where the then owners of the offset, offsets can basically sell them back to the county at a reduced rate. So remember, there were over 900 holders of these offsets. So it was a very large endeavor to work with the county attorney's office, development services, and procurement, to have stakeholder meetings, to let people know that these auctions were going to be coming about, and to help identify and get notice out to them that these auctions were coming. So a lot of public information on trying to get the word out. Now, some of those companies didn't exist anymore. The records were old, so there was a lot of scrubbing of that data that had to be done at that time, because a lot of that went back, you know, even to the 80s. So before we embark on any auction, a resolution comes to you all establishing the parameters of each auction. We say how much money we're going to spend on that auction, when it's going to be held, how much dollars we are going to allocate for that particular auction, and the board approves those parameters. We hold the auction, and then after the auction is held, we also come back to the board to award it to those particular companies that offer them back to us. The way we do each auction is that on a sealed bid, they submit their, their bids, and we fill the bids at the lowest rate first. So in the first auction, which was held in July of 2017, we received bids, qualified bids of 36 bids came into us. We had $10 million to spend, and the auction, they submitted rates to us at, some submitted at 50% and some as high of 76%. So first, we filled and purchased back those at the 50% level until we had spent our whole $10 million. So some, who were at the higher level, didn't get theirs purchased back. But the ones who were selling back at the lowest rates, we purchased first. In that particular case, we purchased over $15 million of offsets for the $10 million. We did that again in August of 2017, 38 bids in. We also had a $10 million, and the average discount rate increased somewhat in the second auction, and we purchased back over $13 million of offsets. The next one, January of 2018, you can see there, 24 bids, getting a little bit less interest by then, by the third one. We had $10 million available in that particular case. We only spent 8.7. So we didn't even receive enough bids to spend our full $10 million, and that was at the 77% rate. And then the fourth one that we did in June of 2018, we only received six bids. Once again, pretty close to the dollar amounts that we spent for the third one, and spent $6.8 million and purchased almost $9 million of offsets. So to date, 47 million almost of offsets are now out of the market, and the county purchased those back, and we spent only $33.5 million for that. So on average, about 72%. So always less than the 100% that they would use if they had used the offsets in the market. So what are we doing with those offsets that we purchased? So we purchased 46.7 million. Some of those offsets are required to be retired, because the money that we use to purchase them, we used impact fee dollars. And when we use impact fee dollars, they're required to be eliminated from the marketplace. So those are retired and done, $9.5 million. But we still have $37 million for use for county purposes. And so what the board did is they established a program to use it for economic development and redevelopment purposes. So to date, you have committed $4.3 million for nine projects that have come before you to use those, those offsets that we have purchased from development, economic development and redevelopment purposes. We still have almost $33 million remaining that we can use for future economic development and redevelopment purposes or for affordable housing. So we are holding those offsets, those credits, I'm sorry, we try not to use the word credits, using those offsets, and then we could use them as the board sees fit for future improvements. So the amount outstanding currently that, that's privately held in the market is just over $50 million. So it's been reduced from that $94 million from several, several years ago, and now it's just over $50 million that remain outstanding in the marketplace. Do you all have questions about that auction process? It's, it's actually quite complicated. It's even more complicated than I described it, because there's restrictions on what money we're using, where we're purchasing them, from what impact fee zone it was, where we're deploying it. We have to make sure that we're using the right money in the right place, but we all do that, so you don't have to worry about that part. But, yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to you that before we do any auction, you all approve it, and you approve the awards as well, and whenever we use the money, it must come before the board for that approval as well.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to board discussion. Commissioner Kemp, you want to start off where you were before?
I'm not sure where I was before. But I guess just to be clear, you probably, but the reason that it starts to jump up in 2021 is because that's the end of the offset. Mm-hmm. That there, there, there will no longer be any...
The grandfathering period ends for those contractual obligations that, the development orders and development agreements.
So it's not on, in, it, it's not because of a kick-in on the impact fee increases? So it looks like, or the mobility fee, from the, transition from impact to mobility fee? We haven't, we're not seeing that at this point, much.
So there is a, there's an, a phase in, as you saw, that's going up to 90%. But when the grandfathering period ends, then any future obligations will be paid by that higher mobility fee.
So let me ask again about, it just seems like, at this point, I don't know how it, with another study underway, step up in the chart if we were to do something like that to a higher level sooner. How would that affect the study underway, or what?
So the recommendation would be to allow that study to be completed, because that's actually looking at the technical bones, and making sure that the land use categories and the trip generation rates that Neil Gunn identified in that traffic engineering manual are appropriate, that the, that we include the most recent cost of construction. We have some new projects underway that can be considered, Bell Shoals is one, Citrus Park is another. So my offer would be, let's let that consideration of the technical pieces be completed, and I think that can be done by June, by June, end of June. And then this board can look at that and determine what percentage it chooses by policy to recover. So if you wanted 90%, I would say, let's wait until we get those new numbers that actually update the technical components of the formula.
So a few more things. The, this is going back to the technical analysis of 21-person miles of daily travel. So is there any different calculation that's done in terms of, is everybody in the county calculated out, or everybody in unincorporated county that this applies to calculated out to be the same 21-person miles? Is there any difference if you're out in the rural service area in terms, because I would imagine that you would have more person miles out there than you would have in the urban service area?
So these are based on averages, and... So, these are based on averages, and I think that has been kind of customary for the impact fee calculation. To do the kind of study and identify trip generation rates different in Wy Mama from Brandon might take some time, but again, I think Neil Goon might be your best one to respond to that piece.
So, the data that we have is a county-wide average. When you go to different pockets, obviously, the travel will change, and there's a range. But really, as far as having the necessary sample and a sound data, we use average. The way we differentiate between the urban and rural is more about the travel conditions and the congestion levels. You know, rural areas enjoying a lot better conditions, so they should pay for it. If they don't continue, urban has more congestion, so then the fee is lower. The infrastructure is more in urban area, you know, so that kind of also serves as an incentive to attract development that way. But as far as the individual components of the fee, I mean, the way people travel from one place to another, or they stay in their local areas, some travel longer distances, we don't feel it's that legally sound to start splitting the county into pieces and have different travel averages.
I was just wondering how that calculation is. I do have a question in terms of, this is from Ms. Garsis. In terms of the RP2, why is that? Why are those in the, why are those considered or put in for urban, lower urban service mobility than the, instead of rural? Because they're outside the urban service area.
So, my recollection is, and I think someone on my staff will correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection is the way that it's treated is if it develops out as a rural pattern, they would pay a rural fee. But if it was developed as part of that RP2, which is what the comp plan designation is, or RP3 or 4, with the commercial centers and the kind of patterns that are anticipated in RP3 and 4, then they would pay the urban fee. So, it depends on what patterns they develop out. If they just choose to develop a rural, they would pay the higher rural fee. But I think what you might be raising is actually getting more to the issue of what the RP2 is. And so, that was the kind of provision that was included in the ordinance.
Because that, yeah, that seems to me to kind of perversely do what we don't want done outside the urban service area, and that would be to incentivize density outside the urban service area by then, and a double, you know, double back at us for then making, allowing them to pay a lower fee for what, you know, for an impact that's even greater. So, I have, you know, I have issues with that in our ordinance. I just, when we bring our ordinance back, I think that's something that I would be definitely asking us to look at.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay.
I don't think it's.
All right. Commissioner Smith, you recognize? Mr. Merman, you recognize?
Okay, I just want to say, good job on the buyback program. Really good job. And owe it to all you staff. I know it's a painful process, and it takes a lot of work to go into those meetings. So, I really appreciate it, Mr. Merrill. I know you and staff, you have put a lot into that. The only question I really have is on Slide 15. And it looks like we're collecting more than we actually have projected. So, are you, what are you doing with the, well, it's not, I guess you could say it's excess, because that's what shows on paper. But does it go into the, where does it go?
So, all of the mobility fees then are maintained in their, spent in the zones that you saw before. So, they are generally, if there's $5 million, if we need it, we can apply it toward any project that might be underway. It depends what zone it was, what benefit zone it's in, but it will be used as part of the revenue toward transportation improvements.
Okay. How do we know how much money we have in each zone?
We can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, and I realize I probably need a tutorial, more of a one-on-one. So, I'm going to try not to take up the board time on stuff that I'll need to really go over, some things in depth. But I do want to just say that I agree with some of the things that have been said by the other board members here, just so you know. I agree with Commissioner Merman and Kemp that we should be sunsetting PDs at a certain point. We need to look at that. I've thought that for a long time. And I agree with Commissioner Kemp that the cost of roads, it seems like we're starting too low on that slide. I don't understand how, say, two lanes would be, two lane miles would be $10 million. I'm quite sure that we just had, when we were talking about spending the surtax, we were talking about 20-something, I think Mr. Lyons was talking about 20-something million a mile being really lower than we could expect to pay anymore for roads. So, I, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't be estimating cost for impact fees at our true costs, even if we're going to end up just collecting 90%, even if we're going to end up phasing that in.
So, that will be the benefit of the materials that Neil Goon will bring back, is she will have the list of all the projects and all our current costs. You will be able to see what those costs are today.
And I also agree with Commissioner Kemp that the idea of charging lower fees to RP2 development that develops in an urban way, that far out, should get a, should get a discount, because even if they provide some, you know, jobs and services right there, there's no doubt they're going to be impacting our roads, and half the people there are going to be driving in, all the way into the city and cities and Brandon area for jobs and services, putting a lot of impact on a lot of roads. And so, and that brings me to a couple of slides. Number 10, for one note. Well, I'm not sure about these land uses, but I know that location is a big factor in trip generation. So, an urban, walkable neighborhood, developing infill in Seminole Heights, is going to generate less trips than commuter subdivisions, outside of Fish Hawk, outside of Wy Mama. So, you know, that should probably be taken into account or could be taken into account. But I don't know if that's accounted for in Slide number 10 with the, I really, I don't understand, the 24 land uses got a trip generation increase, and 33 land uses got a trip generation decrease? Is that the sort of thing that's being considered here?
And it's part of that manual, that International Traffic Institute manual. I'll let Neil Goon speak to that.
That is part of the update. What IT, this last edition did is eliminated any studies before 1980. So, we don't, we are not affected by different demographics that was in existence there and different conditions. So, it's much more tighter timeframe. They added a lot more new studies. So, you see, that's how you see, for example, banks, the trip generation went down, because a lot more people are doing online banking. You know, industrial went down. There are several, even office and retail for the most part, and some increased. The one thing we noticed throughout our studies is when you are in an urban area, like you were mentioning, people take more trips, because distances are shorter and they are, you know, but the distances are shorter. When they go to the rural area, they take fewer but longer trips. So, because we are taking all components in account, at the end, they seem to be pretty much within the same range. It's just the different components are longer. Like, so if you are in a rural area, your trips are longer, but it's fewer of them, because you don't want to drive that long for every little thing. So, you sort of combine the trips, right? In an urban area, you can just run to the store, come back, run again. It's not that big of a deal, so.
Good. I mean, I believe that. I'm sure that you do gang up your trips if you live farther out. It also brings me to the slide number 13 in the new version. It was 12 in my old version, and that showed the five benefit districts. So, if we charge a fee in one of these districts, we have to spend it in that same district? Is that what the benefit districts mean?
Yes, what's collected in that district needs to stay in that district and be spent for improvements.
Well, I mean, again, what seems funny to me is that if you were to develop out in that dark green, I think it's number five area, which is the far southeast of the corner of the RP2 and beyond, you're going to be impacting the roads in the blue and other areas as these people inevitably drive into Brandon and Tampa for jobs and services, so.
Right, their fee is higher. They are in the rural area, so the fee districts are on the other map. So, they do get charged for those trips. It's just what's collected, if you build a roadway in five and take the fee from somebody who lives in one, District 1, it's hard to say that the fee payer is benefiting from that road when there are that long distances. So, this, just to ensure that whoever paid that fee in the District 5 is seeing some benefit in their area from construction.
And well, they should, well, they should. But they're, you know, they're also going to be, we just need to be mindful that they're also going to be creating impacts in those, in those other areas.
Yeah, and that was one of the goals of, that's why probably 10 went down to five, so fewer.
Let me see, number. Okay, number 11, just starting back at the beginning of, well, yeah, and it's number 11. This idea that if you live in a house, you've paid the, you're paying abhorrent tax and fuel tax and a transportation sales tax, so you shouldn't have to be paying for extra impact. You shouldn't be charged twice.
Right.
I'm not convinced that it's the actual homeowner that's being charged twice. I mean, I think it's the initial developer who is paying the impact fee. And then he sells the house, or she sells the house to a homeowner who then pays, like we all pay, sales tax, surtax, gas tax, property tax, that also goes to pay for our impacts on the road. But the, to my mind, it's the developer paying the impact fee. And so, we're not charging him or her twice when we charge the homeowner fuel tax and sales tax and everything. I mean, and I know that the developer will say, well, we're passing it on to the homeowner, right? So, that's the thinking there. But I kind of doubt that, because they're going to charge whatever the market will bear. And so, if the market will bear a higher price while we're charging an extremely low impact fee, they're not going to drop the price of the home. They're going to charge what they can get. Conversely, if, you know, and they're going to keep that money that we should have been charging them in their pocket, which, I mean, it's just sound business. Conversely, if they, if they, we charge a higher impact fee, and they can't raise the price, because they're already charging what the market will bear, I mean, otherwise, they would have been charging more to begin with. I'm not convinced by the whole argument that, by a couple of those arguments, that we need to be careful about how much we charge, or they'll, because they'll raise the cost of the house. Not convinced that we're charging them twice for impacts, because the eventual end user, homeowner, is paying these other fees.
So, there are multiple, so there are some studies who looked at who pays for the fee. And again, like you said, it really depends on the economic conditions. And part of it, if the fee is increasing, sunk into land costs, maybe the land seller doesn't get as much, and some of them passed on. Again, depending on the economy, you know, if it's a strong economy or not. But the main thing with the case law, it does say, the impact needs to be proportional to the, the fee has to be proportional to the impact of the structure or the fee payer. And that's when we come up with, like, if we are building roads with impact fees as well as taxes, and we charge the full cost of impact fee to the new development, and then also send them a tax bill that's going to be used for it, then we are double charging. So, that's the thing. And the impact fee stays with the land, so it's for the entire life of the house. So, if the homeowner sells it down the road to someone else, that value is in there, because the next buyer doesn't have to pay another impact fee. So, you know, it's not just that one time. And then the initial split is, like you said, it could be, depending on the economic conditions, it could be one way or another. But the case law is pretty clear that it needs to be proportional, and we can't charge for the same thing more than once. So, that's kind of, credit is kind of to recognize that.
Well, I'm still not convinced, but I'm not going to belabor the point. One last thing. The buyback program's benefit slide, which is now 22, and it was 21. Let's see. Yeah, oh, wait. So, the buyback program.
I think it's 24.
Oh, yeah. 21, 22. Okay, that was, it was 21, it's now 22. I'm going to have to have a more in-depth talk about how this is really benefiting us, how these offsets that we bought are benefiting us. Because whatever they don't pay, we have to pay anyway. I mean, we have to, if, whatever they're not, roads they're not building, we've got to build. So, I don't, I'm not sure how it helps us to have any coupons that we bought to build these roads. But if we're, one thing that did strike me is if we are going to be buying back offsets, and some we buy at a better percent than others, it seemed like we should have some kind of policy that has a cap on what we spend.
And you do.
Okay.
So, when I said that we come to the board before each auction with the parameters, one of those parameters is setting the maximum amount that we would buy them back. In each of these cases, the maximum was 80%. You can see, none of them went quite to the 80%, because some offered them at lower amounts. But yes, that is one of the parameters the board establishes.
Oh, good.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay, I truly appreciate everyone in the, all the experts in the audience helping us newbies figure this out, but, because it isn't normal. It's, there's anything but normal in this process. I'd like a little bit of help in understanding that revenue credit situation, because, and who actually gets the credit? Because I see, and now have a better understanding of the benefit zone concept, which is where the dual rational nexus is described, which is the first time I actually heard that term was when I was in Tallahassee recently. And I'm like, no, it's not making any sense to me whatsoever, so I guess I'll figure that out later. But I am curious, if the developer pays the mobility fee. But, but I am curious, if the developer pays the mobility fee, is it the home builder that gets the credit? I'm trying to figure out how the credit is actually applied, because if my understanding is the community investment tax pays for a very specific thing, typically, grants and match isn't the benefit of the builder developer's actions, it's the county's actions, if I'm not mistaken. Ad valorem tax pays for everything and fuel tax is a function of fuel and gas tax, we have an increase. So I'm trying to, help me understand how the, who gets the credit and how is it benefit the taxpayers of Hillsborough County in its utilization?
So because so much of this is rooted in case law and I disclose I am not an attorney, I think it is best that maybe Cameron speak to this piece of it.
Okay. Thank you, Cameron. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. First, as the question as to what the credit is, sometimes the term credit gets used for offsets and those are two different things. The credit in this context is used upfront as a means of reducing what the ultimate fee assessed is gonna be. It's not something that's issued to anybody else, not like an offset is issued. In terms of how it operates, the dual rational nexus test is first component is that the amount of the fee that's being assessed has to be reasonably related to the amount of the impact that the fee payer is having on the affected system, in this case, mobility or transportation. The second component is it has to be expended to the benefit of the fee payer, which is what the benefit zones are for. As to the way that the credit works is, for impact fees, the way it's reviewed, the fee payer is the end user. So the, what the impact fee formula looking at is, what is the impact that a new residence that has homeowners living in it and using public facilities, how much impact are they having on the system? So it creates a bit of confusion because the way that our impact fees are assessed, we issue the impact fee assessment with billing permit. So that's when you find out how much the impact fee is gonna be for the developed units, but we don't collect it until CO or you can pay it up until CO if you want to, but that's the final point where it has to be paid. You can't get a certificate of occupancy until you pay your impact fee or your mobility fee. That's really the last leverage point that the county has to compel payment of the regulatory fee. But the fee itself isn't looking at the impact of, say, a thousand unit subdivision with no one in it. It's looking at, here's a thousand unit subdivision with the average number of occupants for these units and the impact that they're gonna have on the affected system. So the way impact fees really work is it's treating the, the end, the fee payer is really the end user. So in terms of credit, the fee payer, the end user, the resident, is gonna be paying what you can see on your screen here. And so if you think of the impact and honestly, from working on this back in sixteen with mobility fees and stuff, having absorbed a lot of this from the consultants, honestly, the way I kind of think of it is, if the complete impact of a new unit was, say, like a pie or pie chart and there was no other revenue stream that this fee payer was gonna be paying into transportation or mobility, then that would essentially be what your fee was. But they're also gonna be paying CIT, they're gonna be paying fuel taxes and now surtax. So those little slivers are amounts that they're paying that are gonna be used, or at least partly used, to construct the same sorts of facilities, which is to say, capacity expanding capital facilities. So to ensure that they aren't overpaying and to ensure that you're not violating the first component of dual rational nexus, you want to take those things into account. And there is case law in Florida that strongly argues in favor of a credit component, but you want to make sure that you're not charging the new, the end user of the fee payer more than their actual impacts in the affected system, since they're also gonna be paying some other ways into it.
Okay, that's very helpful. So when we go to slide fifteen and we look at the schedule in accordance to the various different usage, so I've got a single family, a daycare, an office park or office shopping center, drive-in and industrial, right, industrial. Industrial is half the cost of a single family home. Bank or savings drive-in is significantly more than a home. I'm trying to understand the rationale behind the different uses and how, I mean, is what we're seeing in the way of the payment by a, in general, light industrial of, in 2019, of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four as an example, in this particular example, is that net after the credits?
So Commissioners, yes, that would be after the credits. I think what's really important to disclose on this slide is that it's, sometimes this happens. It's not for the full industrial site, it's per thousand square feet or per some unit. But it is, what we are showing here is net of the credits.
Okay. So it would appear as though some types of usage gets more credits than others or is able to qualify, or there's a pretty wide range of whatever our mobility fee would be based on square footage of the actual property?
So if you go back to some of the earlier slides, behind all of these is what it's costing us plus the trip generation rate plus the trip length. So all of those are creating variables that go into each one of these. So depending on if a bank drive-in generates more trips, but the trips are shorter, that may have a different impact than a single family home, so. But all of these numbers that you are seeing are net of the credit that Cameron discussed.
Okay. So I'm curious about how this relates to our, our planning, our urban planning, our comprehensive plan and just our general growth in general, how we address not only the cost associated with, with building within an area that is growing at the rate, even though we didn't get a chance to see our population study, but I think if anybody was paying attention, we know we have a significant number of people moving here, we have a significant deficit in affordable housing, in addition to workforce housing. So we're doing something that isn't necessarily working for us. And I'm curious about if there's been any research anywhere in there as to the differences between, as our conversation was this morning regarding, you know, double access and crossstones and roads and communities that connect to each other, the difference in the, in the cost of, you know, developing transportation in grid fashions versus suburban, because I know that when you live in a lot of our suburban communities here now that we've created in Hillsborough County, you have no choice but to get in a car. When you build grid communities or complete communities where we have a mixed use PD, let's use that as an example, where we have, you know, schools and daycares and grocery stores embedded inside of a planned development so that you don't necessarily get out on the main road, so you don't have to get in a car, so you're not using your trips in the same manner. We don't have very many of those, but if we did, would it make sense in how we design our communities going forward, given we can't sprawl all over this county? And the goal here is, you know, in our mobility fees, is to pay for the growth that we have along the way at some point in time. But if we continue to not encourage smart development in a way that makes sense financially sense to our developers and home builders or to our real estate, you know, our commercial developers, if we're able to come up with at least a methodology in how we do these fees to create complete communities, we won't get ahead of this. We'll continue building long roads that are very expensive per mile or allowing sprawl to get to a place where we can't provide the other services that go along with this. And that's my concern, is while I see the trend that we have here and it seems if I were a developer to be looking at the trend in terms of the increase in mobility fees, I'd be a little worried because it is shown to go up, but that's largely because we haven't raised them in so long. But we do have a problem with being able to build at the rate of which we're estimating at this point, I think, or at least it appears that, because based on what we've heard from, you know, our transportation professionals, the numbers at which we're hearing would cost a certain per mile is quite a bit more than what on average we're looking at. So I'm, I am concerned that if, if whatever we create as a mobility fee structure continues to allow the kind of decision-making process by those that help us build our communities, we're not gonna get out of the mess that we've already created. And that's my concern. I'm trying to figure out, how do we create the incentive to build in a different way? And I'm not seeing that within this kind of conversation, but I would love to figure out how to, how to have that. I'm not a developer, but it makes sense to me to try and create a fee structure that actually encourages good planning. Is that something we can do? I mean.
So a couple of things, if I could. On a very macro level, the notion, I think, of what you're describing of charging a higher fee for those who travel more versus one who, a fee for those who are in a more compact urban environment at a very macro level, that's occurring with the assessment zones as we've created them by separating out a rural versus an urban. Not to confuse matters, but in the prior impact fee ordinance, the fee in the urban areas was far less than it was in the rural areas and so it promoted, along with concurrency development in rural areas. I think there are ways to look at and maybe explore in this process for those kind of communities that you're describing, if there is something that can be contributed through the impact fee offsets that we currently have to encourage that kind of development pattern. But it is and not, it is not currently in this ordinance and some of that goes back to the fact that most of what is in any impact fee ordinance is generally based on averages. I think the legal test, again, would be that we have to meet an average. And so I think what, in Hillsborough County, we're very diverse and I think that's some of the conversation that I heard here, but some of that average also allows you to get to some simplicity in charging.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other thing to remember is that the impact fee that used to exist was only related to cars and roads. So the mobility fee incorporates all modes of transportation. So just because we're building, or let's just say, we're building more dense walkable communities, doesn't necessarily mean the total cost of the infrastructure goes down. So yes, they're driving less, but because the mobility fee now includes transit, the transit component goes up, which is very expensive. So I'm not sure that just by building more dense communities, necessarily the mobility fee goes down because it depends on what alternative, the cost of the alternative transportation methods you're using. So you kind of, I don't want anybody to think that that necessarily means mobility fees go down. I'm not sure that builders and developers really primarily make the decision on what to build and where to build based on the fee. It's based on the market. So it's not like the tail's wagging the dog here. Now, at a certain point, if the fee is so excessively high, yes, that makes a difference. What we need to be influencing is not from a fee point of view, it's from the marketplace point of view, because they, they're selling a product and no business sells a product that people don't want. So if they're building a certain type of dwelling, it's because there's a demand for it. We can influence the demand, certainly, I mean, communities do that, but the fee really isn't gonna make that much of a difference. It's really other kinds of incentives that we, that we provide. So it's, again, from a macro level, a different kind of economics, I think.
I don't disagree with that. The cheapest way to provide any mobility is with two pairs, with a pair of shoes. I mean, honestly, you can't compare that to the cost of having transit in a location. But to that point, we, what we're seeing currently with this, you know, if we're looking at a three-year average in fees and what we're seeing in the way of economic cycles and growth in Hillsborough County, three years makes a difference. The three to six years we've seen and the difference in certain communities' growth and, and demand has been significantly shifted when it comes to what's happened in, say, for example, Fishhawk to move to Apollo Beach. There's been a huge shift in where people are moving to in that part of the county, largely due to congestion and a potential project that might help people get around. You know, I live in the middle of town, the difference in the perception of what it's like to live in the middle of town in the, say, for example, in the Heights area, just in the last six years, is profoundly different. So, you know, that, looking at our fees more frequently, I think, obviously is something we need to do. Two, not extending long-term contracts out to hold fees steady is critically important to our overall growth. But I do think it's a combination of, we can, I think we do need to look at how our comprehensive plan is working and how it fits within our mobility fees, because we are becoming a more dense county as a whole. There clearly are areas that will stay rural and would like to be rural, but I do think that we, we do have an opportunity in those areas that traditionally have been suburban that are now more urban than they've ever been, that we do need to address as we continue to develop in those areas, the impact to the community that lives there and the cost associated with it. Thank you.
I think Commissioners, just very quickly, Neil Gunn reminded me that our current mobility fee ordinance does have a provision for mixed-use development and so if someone is building a mixed-use development with walkability and alternative paths, there is a way for them to conduct a study that shows they capture more trips internally and then thereby reducing the total obligation of their mobility fee.
Okay, we're gonna bring this plane in for landing. I can see the runway now. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Just a few statements. As Ms. Garcia said, back in 2015, I don't know how long, if ever, that those fees have been looked at, they were switched from impact fees to mobility fees, but it made no sense. Not only were we way undercharging what Pasco and Manatee were, but we had our formula backwards and we, it was, the districts that were drawn made no sense. The impact costs for a rural area were, it was lower to encourage rural development and higher in the urban service area and that was reversed with this mobility fee and the maps were changed and everything was done and although we still then and now remain lower, far lower than our neighbors to the north and south, I have, I wanna, I was waiting for a lawyer to get up during the earlier revenue credit discussion, so thank you very much for that really good explanation that I've heard before, but still I could have never, like, gotten up and made that as clear. I think you are better than the case law, for sure. So anyway, but, and so it's, you know, our remedies, I think, on that seem to be limited by case law. It's not, it's not something that we, although I would agree with the misgivings and the issues that others have with that, but it is a case law issue rather than something that we have the ability to impact on. I do, however, with revenue credits, have a question and that's with regards to the four, four things, community investment tax, grants and match, ad valorem tax and fuel tax are all things that are considered in the current formula, as I understand. Now we have transportation sales tax down here and you're saying that we're gonna get something back by June, but we don't have a transportation sales, sales surtax at this time and that I would give a credit here, a revenue credit that at this time would not be, we don't have that going on yet and so I'm just wondering how that's gonna be dealt with.
I think the other missing piece, though, is quite frankly, is how will that surtax be used that will meet the requirement? So for example, bucket number one in the surtax that allows for resurfacing and stormwater maintenance wouldn't be eligible to be credited. So I think what we're gonna do then is to really, we need to know what those improvements are. What we would provide for you then is an, a mobility fee update with and without the surtax number, that you'll be able to see how those, how that impacts depending on where, how this moves.
So at the time, we would, I guess, if we changed this pretty soon and the decision wasn't made, then we would review that again. decision wasn't made, then we would review that again at the time, that we have more surety about that.
I think I would defer to Christine as well.
And I think this study update is critical, but keep in mind the tax is being collected, and it is presumed valid at this time. So, until it, until it is...
So, even though we don't have it to spend?
So, that, that'll be configured into the study update, though. I'm sure it will be, but...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Wheels have just touched down the runway. Commissioner Miller, you recognize?
The plane has landed. Don't worry. I just, I, and I want to tell you all, when I came on this commission, and Commissioner Miller, you remember this, we were in the midst of recession.
Oh, yeah.
We had no money. We lost half, you know, you look at $5 billion in our budget, we were down to like $2.5 billion. So, you can, we cannot increase fees to get ourselves out of this problem. They have to be able to withstand the test of downturn, everything. Otherwise, you know, the effects that it has on, you know, the developers and home builders, commercial, whatever it is, I mean, it, it will drive people out of this county, it will drive business away. Unemployment will go up. So, I mean, I'm just saying this as a frame of reference. We are in great times right now, and I'm very happy about it. I know Mr. Merrill is, because he saw, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. But honestly, we cannot, we have to be very careful about these fee increases, because you have to look at the effects, long-term effects, that they may have, and they are predicting a downturn sometime at the end of next year, maybe. But you have to be able to, we, no, we just can't increase our fees out of this backlog. We have to prioritize other business, other decisions we have in our budget, and go forward. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia's, next steps.
Next steps, Commissioners. Then we will continue the study and bring back the information with the update component. Specifically, I heard you want to really zoom in on what the construction costs are and what we're paying per lane mile. I think that was an important piece of it. I think the credit piece will move forward, will bring back numbers, what they looks like with and without the sales surtax, once we have a transportation program that you will be looking at on June the 1st. Once we have that, I think we will be working with the stakeholders as well, and meeting with them on what the fees would look like, and then we would bring something back to you end of June, beginning of July, to look at for implementation.
Okay. All right. Plane's at the gate. You're going to unbuckle your belts and get out of here. Return.
Thank you.